There we go. At 6:30, we'll call this meeting to order and first in order of business is an executive session.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, the first exec session proposed for the evening is for a discussion of a personnel matter, the city manager candidate, Appleby Green. This could be convened pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113C1 and Colorado Revised Statute 246424F1.
I will go around and poll council that you want to go into executive session and you'll keep what is done there confidential. Councilor Baker?
Yes, and I will.
Councilor Seymour?
Yes, and the same.
Councilor Emmons?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Namela?
Yes.
Councilor Isady?
Yes.
And we will excuse everyone else from the meeting.
Thank you.
And we'll come and get you in with it. I'm going to start the recording if I'm transferring you over.
Welcome, thank you for your patience. We just came out of executive session and we will have council reports now. I just report that Saturday, we had a wonderful Station 5 open house. It was fantastic. Everybody always has so much fun. And then that night, we had the father-daughter ball. And the energy in that room, my videos, they danced from six o'clock to nine o'clock. The only time they aren't is when they're on their carriage ride. It just was a magical evening and I slept 10 hours after all that because they drained my energy. It was great. Any other council reports, Councilor Namela?
I have notes from our, from the Dr. Cog meeting that I need to send out. So I apologize if I've done that, but I will do that.
Okay, Councilor Yassadi?
Just that I was also there at the firehouse. It was great. I went with my daughter, had a great time. There was a fire truck tour that residents really loved, so it was a good time.
Mayor for Kim?
I also stopped by the Station 5 open house, which is always a neighborhood favorite. So thank you to all the first responders and staff that made that happen. It's always fun for the neighborhood. I also attended, as I know some of my colleagues did, the first night of the Civic Academy last week. So that was really enjoyable, a good group of people, really engaged, lots of good questions. So look forward to being able to drop by a couple more times and take it for granted.
They're having a hard time hearing me, I have to speak up.
I also attended the Civic Academy the first week. So I attended the Civics Academy Week 1. It was, again, a great group of people, excited that we have that up and back running. Thank you to staff for coordinating that and looking forward to many more of these sessions. And then I also attended the North Metro Arts Alliance. They are really doing well in their fundraisers. And I want to thank the city for helping promote their events. The Johnny Appleseed play that took place at the beginning of June went over really well and they were able to meet some fundraising marks for that. And during the meeting, we didn't, even though we gather, we didn't really meet because we were doing arts and crafts. We were preparing the rocks that will be painted for the Cultural Arts Festival taking place on July 9th. I think we mentioned last meeting, it seems like everything is happening in Westy on July 9th. So we prep the rocks for, they're going to have, I'm going to say this wrong, but mandala art. They're kind of like in shapes of different designs, but has a cultural aspect to it. And they will be up for donation at their booth at the cultural fair on July 9th. And that's it for me.
Just to repeat, a couple visits. Mayor and I had an opportunity to do an onsite visit with Alton Inc., a rapidly, used to be known as Synchronist, and they got bought out. Economic Development staff joined us and we had a great chat with them, along with another engineering group that we met with the week before. Westminster's a hotbed for engineering and they're all hiring. I mean, Alton brought on seven interns this year just because they're trying to lock in the new interns coming out of school and opportunity to vet them early. So that was, that was a great visit, but that's it.
Councilor Baker?
Instead of going to the Civics Academy, I tuned into the Dr. Cog. I think it's really important. I don't think just notes give it full justice. It's like the notes here about Dr. Cog. And it could be our perspective, okay? But they talked a whole lot about this economic development organization which they want to make. I raised my hand but was never able to ask, aren't we already covered by economic development things? Isn't there a statewide one?
We have multiple, but this is different because it allows us to get federal funding, which is just
Well, if we made the SEDs, then the SEDs could get federal funding.
It could help us leverage that, that planning document to get us federal funding. So, yeah, it's
Really, but, really, but the discussion I thought far more important was the GHG discussion. And GHG, they all talk in terms and it drives you to cut. Greenhouse gases, okay? And Dr. Cog staff hates cars. And in this GHG discussion, they talked about the punitive actions they will take against cities if cities don't bend to their will. They want to lower parking requirements. They want to eliminate, they don't want to have, they don't want to imply in any way maximum parking requirements. They hate cars. And they're taking all kinds of steps to deprive us of funding, to put us in lower priority for funding, to even exclude us in certain funding steps if we don't bend to their will. We're a suburb. We're absolutely 100% dependent on cars. You know, parts of our city are miles from grocery stores. To go to the Mac or to go to Central Park, you have to use a car. And this is an important discussion. Did you see it differently or did you hear it differently?
Yeah, so it was, these were not set in stone at all. These were a menu of options that were in consideration, but not, none of them have been voted on. They are just discussing what is in legislation. It's not about what we necessarily have to do. So there are a lot of questions that came from a lot of different cities about, well, what does that mean for us? Who, you know, when we don't have, I was going to ask the same question that somebody else brought up in terms of, we don't have transit, so what does that mean for us who can't necessarily reduce some of our traffic numbers, for example? So I see this as just a continuing conversation that we're all going to have to have as communities to see what actually is feasible. We've already done some reductions in parking, so it's kind of like, well, what more can we do? That's one of my questions as we move forward. But again, it's really what's feasible for us. So I think you're right, these are great things to be talking about. I just didn't see it as, I saw it as an introduction of the topic, not a final, not, not at all a final conversation.
For me, it was a continuation of an ongoing conversation. And I view the reductions we've done as a city in parking to be horribly harmful. Every time I drive down Federal Boulevard and go by St. Mark's, what can you do for the people? Not only in St. Mark's, but in the environs, but at the Wishbone and at the church and at that ridiculous Holly Park urban renewal area, which sits there like some vacant dinosaur, okay? I think we did the same thing in Semper Gardens. I think in Semper Gardens, by allowing them to place the sawhouses sideways, we eliminated two parking spots for every residence in that thing. And I think in the future, people are going to be fighting each other over a parking spot. And we don't have mass transit. And there is no solution to the first mile, last mile. And we don't want people going out of our city to work someplace else. We'd like them to work in our city because then they don't have to drive as far. So I thought this as a really important, and it should be on council's agenda, and what we want to bring to the conversation at Dr. Cog. We want to passively sit there as Dr. Cog and the staff. And remember, the staff's not elected by any citizen of Denver Metro. And with this enormous unwieldy group, group of directors. How many directors are, aren't there something like 50 cities?
A lot.
And everyone has two directors and so, and half of us have to figure out what THG means. So it's almost like others making, designing our future for this. And I think we should design our future.
I think, I agree that these are definitely things that we need to discuss. And that was actually going to be what I was bringing up in my email to folks because they, I did write that. That was a GHG conversation, it's like, well, what does that mean for us? So, and there's other things too that we should discuss too. So I agree, but, you know.
I was just thinking too, because we've kind of discussed this a little bit, in that if we could, along with our policy people formulate some kind of policy as we do in our legislative policy statement, work through some of those that way. So that, you know, then we have that and then it would, it would help, it would help me look into what we have as an option. Plus then, our representatives could, you know, be armed with that as for, for the discussion.
Right, and bring the voice of council to the
Yeah, and we could look at it, try, try in generalities because like the legislative policy positions, we have to, you know, take a guess at what's coming up next, but frame those things in a greater sense. How do we feel in general about this topic or that topic? And then we don't have to address the immediacy is quite often too.
So really, that is my report.
Great, thank you.
Just a quick request there, if we're doing that, if we do this through in the public forum, not
Right, right.
forum, not, not by email.
No, I was just, like.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Like pre-session, yeah.
Just making sure.
But if we, if we, that's right, yeah, good.
I have two other things I wanted to bring up to council, but real quick to your point, Council Baker, at the Semper Garden, I understand what you're saying, and I agree, I don't especially want other outside entities telling us how much parking we should have. That one I saw different because it's, nobody's forcing them to buy there. And so if there's a market, there is a market for some people who don't want much, that aren't gonna have as many cars. But I 100% agree with you that I'm concerned about having entities push us into unrealistic things for a suburb, because people are gonna travel. I have to travel 45 minutes to get to my job, because, I mean, so it's, there is a conversation that should be had. The two other things I wanted to bring up, one is, I don't know how many of you saw out of the news, there's a move in Aurora's council about locally addressing some of the crime problems. I would like to talk about options for this council to look at, how we could add extra penalty onto certain crimes that we're having problems with. The ones that come to mind are theft of catalytic converters, auto theft, drug-related offenses, some of the things that I think that the state legislator has went soft on, their ability as a municipality to say, these certain crimes, we're going to hold people accountable on top of whatever, you know, other penalties the state has or the county has. I would like to look at those options, and I would appreciate council's support in us asking staff and giving some direction to come back with what, what we could do in those areas, because I think that, I'm sure you've heard loud and clear, like I have, that the residents are fed up with, with the crime. And so, one other area that I would say is obstruction, and this is something I heard directly from our police officers, was that they wanted the ability to hold people accountable when they're trying to enforce the law, and people are getting in between them and what they're trying to do. So I would appreciate us as a council looking at that, and I, you know, I would actually ask that we pull and see if we could give direction to have staff come back with some sort of options, what that might look like.
Council Baker, are you okay with that?
Sure. Yeah, in a broad sense, I, I, I think it would take multiple departments' input from municipal court judge.
Louder, please.
I would think that it would take multiple departments, including the municipal court judge in there. You know, we only have certain things that we can enforce from that standpoint, too, and we have a cap on that as far as a municipal court of any sentences of 364 days, I believe, too. So, you know, if we, we want to make sure that it's one, one of the issues, too, that some of our cities in the area are also counties, and so they control a court during their.
Yeah, I think if we add on stuff, we'd have to do hardcore.
Yeah.
And I 100% agree. I would want the intent to be things in our control, so I do think all the stakeholders that control the area of the city, that would be my intent.
Okay, I'd be fine with that, looking at it.
Council Evans?
Good clarification.
Yes, but also what Councilor Seymour said is that our municipal judge involved, our PD involved, our legal team involved, it's not just a one-sided conversation as far as like what, and maybe even code needs to be involved too, to really see holistically how we can make it an encompassing policy.
Councilor Zadi?
Yeah, so car theft is a, it's out of control, and I think, like Mayor Pretend said, we've all seen it, heard it, I hear it maybe two, three times a day, and it's impacting our low-income families the most. When their converters are stolen, it's 2,500, 3,000, 4,000, just to replace it, and they're, they can't pay their rent, they can't pay their mortgage, you know, some of them are losing their jobs just to replace a car because our car theft issue is out of control. What I would want to see, though, is a holistic solution, that's not just penalization. I don't know if that's the answer, probably a part of it is penalization, but I want to make sure that we're not skipping over all the root causes as to why we have this. So I would want staff to not just focus on penalization, but give us a full set of options, a, a package of what we can do as a city to address this, that's not just focused on one piece of it.
Debra?
Yes, I'm, I'm for understanding the full scope, so to Councilor Zadi's point, but also to just, yeah, understand from all the different departments how that's gonna fit together, and if, if there is any associated, you know, fiscal impact to that, that would be helpful as well.
And I'm in for looking at it, so thanks. Anything else?
One other thing that I wanted to get back to you on was, and I know, again, thank you for going and attending the Rocky Mountain Air Roundtable. For those folks that don't know, I am the liaison, and Councilor Emmons is the alternate. However, because of our work situations, we haven't been able, well, I haven't been able to attend, and Councilor Emmons now can't attend with her new job, so the mayor stepped in, and they have asked, if you recall, they've asked to increase those dues. I was a proponent of joining this group and funding to the level that we're at today, because my desire and anticipation was that we were actually gonna do something that was gonna address somehow what the residents want. I understand that's a complicated situation, because much is outside of the control of that group, it's really up to the FAA. But that being said, there are areas where they could address the concerns of the residents in my mind, even, you know, from guidelines to FAA and what the mayor shared with us after her last meeting, there are things that they can do. However, they're not actually focused on any of those things where we have any sort of control. So for me, I would not only say I don't want to fund it, but until they actually start focusing on some of those meaningful things that we, they could make an impact, I say we would, we withdraw in protest, because I don't see the point of spending taxpayer money on something that's just for them to show up and have a meeting and talk about the problems.
I agree.
City Manager Andrews, any thoughts on this? I know we have staff that attends.
Yeah, we can, we'll, we can follow up. Looked into the invoice, invoice and invoices to be paid. We believe the one currently in play is the one from this year, not the elevated rate, so we can bring back something for you, but if, if it's council's direction to withdraw from this group, we can act on that if council wants to give us those directions.
I'm, I'm always concerned if we lose, you know, if we lose a seat at the table, do we lose part of the discussion? But that's been my concern, is that there hasn't been much meaningful discussion or, you know, or moving along a direct path. That's, that's been frustrating in seeing the notes from that as well. And maybe, you know, our, our colleagues in Boulder made that hard decision, too. So maybe, maybe it'll be something that, that they look at and say, well, maybe we need to change our direction because we're gonna lose all of our members. You know, if you don't have members, you don't have direction, and so maybe they, you know, be willing to change that direction and, and address the address. And it's, it is a tough problem, because the FAA is not gonna bend to our will. So, it's.
Councilor Emmons?
Well, I also was a proponent of joining the group, I think because at the time we heard a lot of, and this was at the height of, I believe it was just when COVID started in 2020, and we heard a lot of our residents, well, they were more home, they go more often, the noise was a problem, and then it just kind of amplified from there. And so we were a proponent of joining. I don't think this group was all for naught. I think we learned that there are guidelines through this, and that we can't change FAA rules, our hands are tied realistically in a lot of senses on flight patterns. And so I think there is some things that we've taken away, but with the group and what, what, what's been said as far as, there's no direction, there's no foresight, it's, it's, they're literally talking about the same thing for the last, what seems like two years, as far as trying to find a solution for noise or mitigation on environmental concerns. And so we have not, I feel like we have not accomplished anything in two years as far as reducing what the community has wanted, which is reduction in noise. And so, but much to Councilor Seymour's concern of, if we're not there at the table, how do we navigate that? You know, I feel like, I feel like there might be other ways that we could jump in on now with our federal and state legislators, who do we have?
Lobbyists.
Thank you, lobbyists is the word I'm looking for, to maybe help navigate that, that area, put our funds to, to that use instead of to this group, where I feel we haven't really gotten any kind of sense of accomplishment on.
Councilor DeMilla?
I'm also, you know, reticent to, to leave the table if we don't have an, some other way to get our input and feedback and, you know, with respect to this, to the airport. So I, I guess what is our alternative? And one, I guess, is maybe going to the federal lobbyist side of things, but I mean, I don't know. Having heard from folks too who have concerns about environmental impacts, it's still something that I feel like we should be pushing for, so can't really push for it unless we're at the table. So I guess my question, since I'm kind of getting a lot of this, you know, obviously secondhand, is there a way to, I, I guess there's the, the level that we've been at, and then there's this, this additional amount that they were asking for for the study.
They basically told us if we don't pay the additional amount, we're no longer in the group.
They used that as my threat when I was there, and I said, that works two ways. You throw us off, you also throw the money away. And Boulder concurred, yes. It doesn't, you don't get the money if you, if we're not at the table, so.
I know, it's a.
And, and it's their attitudes. I mean, they have a, it doesn't matter, we could say the most enlightening thing, and they justify in whatever they're thinking, and has nothing to do with what was just said. That's what was frustrating, and I'd not been to a meeting before. The biggest thing for me was, they kept talking about, there's this narrow area that FAA, we can make changes. Well, then let's educate the public what those four, three areas are. Is there anything in that that makes a difference? If not, then we're going down the wrong path anyway, because that's all FAA will listen to, to make a change. So it might not, I mean, so it just was frustrating, because they're just thinking they want that $96,000 to go hire lobbyists or a facilitator.
Is there any way to change or have an influence on who's running the show there, or?
Well, if they get a facilitator, it would be the facilitator. But they just went out with an RFP and had zero applied.
We were about to hire a facilitator, and then they started fighting about the facilitator, and they only had two facilitators we even put in, and then there was question about some sort of, some sort of relationship between the facilitator that was gonna do it in the airport. And so there was not trust in that facilitator being impartial, is the way that I, I took it. And so then they started fighting about that, and then they had to go back out to RFP, and then the price tag has now increased.
And there's, for the community, there's absolutely no accountability for this money that they want to spend, that's their money. I mean, it doesn't come from anywhere else, but each of the cities and counties that are paying into this, this is taxpayer money.
Who, and, so we have Broomfield and Boulder County and Superior, Lafayette, Louisville, Boulder County, Broomfield. What? And so is it just Boulder and us that are having an issue, or has it been expressed by others?
Well, our VADA wasn't there.
And they convinced Broomfield sitting there to go ahead and vote yes instead of no, because they were originally no.
I think this is a club, too. It doesn't have any official standing in any federal or state capacity, does it? Yeah, so this is just a club.
If people want to think about, we could still bring it up next week, if whoever's running next week, because they, they meet the second Tuesday, Monday?
Monday.
Yeah, so we've, we still have time. I just, we needed to see where people were.
I guess, so maybe as a follow-up, do we have any other way to influence operations outside of being in this group?
Well, we can lobby with the 2nd Congressional District, and the 8th Congressional District, and the 7th Congressional District, and both our senators.
Even, even being inside the group, it, it is a very limited scope, even, and, you know, I'm, I'm sure that's very frustrating for people, too, is, is that, you know, it, it was put together because of the concerns, because COVID heightened that, and, and, you know, and then we learned a lot, there's presentations before councils and county governments, and it's basically, yeah, here's, here's where we're at, and here's what we can't do. You know, it's under the purvey of the FAA, so.
We were all proponents of it. I mean, I was all on board with.
Absolutely. Absolutely, it was a good idea.
Tried it, didn't work.
Yeah, tried it and didn't work, and now it's kind of gotten out of hand.
Mayor, what I could offer is, staff could prepare an information memo for city council. We can bring in the history of this group, the mandate, the scope of the work, the potential scope of influence, particularly around FAA, FAA as raised tonight, and then present some options or other possibilities that are alternatives to membership in the group.
That's excellent, but they're all going to want to know by July, because their budget system and like their fiscal, it starts in July, so I'm not sure how that works. I mean, maybe Teresa Bogos could help us kind of navigate that, but I know in July is when they're looking, that's their hard deadline to set a budget.
Okay, we'll look at the deadline dates. I know that we, the invoice we're processing now is at the old rate, not the new one, and so we'll look at, we may have some room to, some timeline room there. If we are not able to present it, we'll, we'll try and accelerate that memo to you, and if it's a late add to an agenda for you.
It's just information only, but how.
Correct, yeah.
Perfect, great. Councilor Zadi, did you have anything?
Yeah, just wanted to add on that, from what I'm hearing secondhand, it sounds like it's like a leadership, lack of cost transparency, which is really what we're asking for, is whether, how the money will be used. So my suggestion would be also, on top of this memo, maybe we write a letter, sort of a list of demands, one final step of saying, here's what we want, can you please break down the cost, where, where this money would go, in a formal, official letter to that group? If they don't respond satisfactorily, then we pull out, rather than says pulling out.
Anything else? Okay.
I just, for, I am hitting back on Dr. Cog just really quickly. Obviously, this is new for me to be going to these meetings, and I've seen us provide comments from our various meetings, both in email form and in, and in, during study session comments. So what is the best way particularly, I mean, for Dr. Cog, they are like policy issues, as you were talking about, and should we?
Huge influence.
Right, so, should we have a study session item that's kind of focused on some of these big issues? That's one, and then just two, how, how best to get back to the rest of the group monthly? I could use your input.
Is that something that Deborah Basket could put together? Because I found it helpful in our info-only, I think she wrote down like kind of the upcoming items. Maybe that's kind of a placeholder item that we could.
That way, public gets to see it, too.
Right.
That'd be good. Maybe city manager deputies have other ideas, or Deborah, you could talk.
We can, we could also put together an information memo similarly structured.
So we can have a conversation about, good, okay. And do you, there, there are presentations with a lot of, you know, a little more detail, I would say, than obviously notes can provide, so is that something, so those come every month, you know, so I can send the presentation. So those come every month, you know, so I can send the presentations on as well. What would be helpful to this group?
If it's easy enough for you, just afford them on without, you know, don't want to have to add on extra, you know, on top of that. But if we have the raw presentation, it's something that keys to us, then we can know where it's at.
Okay. Anything else?
No, it's just that Dr. Cog's, in my view, very important. And Dr. Cog is having a profound impact on the Denver metro area and on the city of Westminster and on the future that we're forming. We need to advance the ideas that we think are important because we're the elected voice of the people. And I don't think the ideas that I've heard at the Dr. Cog meetings I went to, I like at all. Because they were also talking about housing, right?
They've brought it up, but they haven't proposed anything.
And Dr. Cog is really the source of the 151,000 residents living in Westminster.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't go that far, but I bet a lot of people moved here without Dr. Cog.
Okay, moving us along, we'll get on to our presentations, but first we need to share verbally our city manager recruitment. We had a meeting for an hour with our consultant tonight. We had 33 people apply. They have narrowed it down to 11. They are going to continue with those folks digging deeper and bring us, I don't know if it's going to be three, I don't know if it's going to be seven. We left it, wherever that line gets drawn, that this is the cream of the crop, we will look at and we need staff to know that July 6th, 7th and 8th are blocked out for Zoom meetings for us to be able to, once the decision is made, however many we're going to do a first Zoom call with, that those are the dates we're going to shoot for. Once that's done, we will then look at in the next weeks, we're trying to do this the month of July, that then we bring people here for us to meet one-on-one for, to figure out how we're going to allow interaction with who and what and how. All of those things are yet to be determined. But that is our next step is July 6th, 7th and 8th Zoom calls with however many they bring us as the top whatever. So as soon as we know that number, I will share, but they just need some time to do some more digging and talking to people and before they make that recommendation to us. So that's where we're at. Next, we have proposed 2022 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. City Manager, hand it over.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Call staff up to the table. Lindsay Kimball, our Director of Economic Development, will introduce staff and begin the discussion presentation.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam and Councilors. Pleasure to be with you tonight. We do have a presentation. I will say I'm Lindsay Kimball, your Director of Economic Development. I have with me here Molly Thayer, who some of you know, she's our housing consultant and manages our CDBG program, as well as Stephanie Trowler, our Manager of Economic Resiliency. Next slide, please. Just really quickly, I wanted to do some table setting before I turn it over to Molly. We are here tonight to give you an update on the process. Bless you. And with all things federal and especially HUD and CDBG, there's a process. Things are formulaic and prescriptive and proscriptive. So we are here today to try to simplify, you know, that alphabet soup as much as we can to, to help simplify the process for you, our timing and to leave you with some key dates. And most importantly, information on how this body and the public will be able to weigh in to the formation of our annual action plan, which is tied to the five-year consolidated framework. And I also wanted to note that all communities across the country are following, follow the same process. So as I said, it's very structured and very federal, federalized. So we are going to again, try to simplify that, walk you through it. And we are going to start by telling you about our consolidated plan, our annual action plans. And again, that community process, which is very important so we can have that informing and directing the annual action plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Molly.
Thank you, Lindsay. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam, Council. Great to see you all in person. I'm glad to see you really aren't little teeny tiny people that speak on the screen. I'm going to start off with the next slide. Thank you. So as Lindsay just laid the groundwork, CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant, which is a very fastly stated acronym frequently, is an entitlement grant and the city of Westminster has been an entitlement since the early 2000s, a little over 20 years now. As such, we receive an apportioned amount of money based on our census and based on our poverty measures. And that is how we are allocated us of funding each year. It is a fund set by Congress in the T-HUD Act. With that funding, as you see in the bullet up there, the funding is given to us so that we can program it locally to create programs that address issues in our community that are experienced by our low and moderate income families, create economic development activities and opportunities and do things that help stimulate the vitality of our community. In order to be eligible to be used for CDBG funding or to use our CDBG funding, the activity, the program must meet one of HUD's three national objectives. So that's the first one, the tentamount one, is to benefit our low and moderate income persons. When programming the funding to do that, we do it as a direct support to a low and moderate income person. That is a benefit when we work on housing. When you can, you can use CDBG anywhere in Westminster. If you're working on a housing project, the people who will reside in the housing will qualify to live there. We also do low moderate area benefit and that is dictated by our census tract and block group that demonstrates that there is a resident group that is 51% or greater who earn less than 80% of the area income. So those are the two ways it's applied directly on programmer projects or by area benefit. CDBG can also be used to, in the aid of prevention of elimination of suns or blight. That has not been any programming I've seen in our files. And then CDBG is applied nationally to benefit during an emergency. You see CDBG initials DR for disaster recovery when HUD steps in to help out after a national disaster. And most recently, we were on the receiving end of CDBG CB, which is COVID. So we received $837,000 between 2020 and 2021 to use for direct benefits to help our residents who are harmed or affected economically by COVID. Next slide. As Lindsay has stated, the process begins with what is known as the consolidated plan. Every jurisdiction participating in the Community Development Block Grant has to have a five-year plan. Our most current plan, which is you see on the screen, was developed in 2020 and was approved by HUD at the very beginning of 2021. Things were moving slowly back then, if you guys remember the the timing, the virtual meetings, the interest in getting people to participate. The community, the consolidated plan identifies basically two goals and those are the goals that guide all of our investments. The staff, after going through the data with our home consortium or our CDBG consortium group, landed on two broad goals. They are to preserve and expand affordable housing. So we put together programming to do that as well as the interest in upgrading some infrastructure and performing street improvements in those areas which qualify by census tract, the qualified areas. These two goals help us simplify and drive our project planning and our investment planning because they're consistent with HUD's national objective. And next slide. The programs that we have put into place thus far and those that we are looking at expanding in 2022 are listed on the left. So under the goal of preserving and expanding affordable housing, we have a flagship program that I think many of you are aware of, the Emergency and Essential Home Repair Program. And we fund that every year and we work with two subcontracting sub recipients, as we call it in the federal funding world, who implement that program for us. Our second project that was developed during the consolidated planning process is to invest CDBG funding to preserve our affordable housing, affordable housing we already enjoy. And then this year, we're coming to you with proposal to use a little bit of our CDBG allocation to provide some resource to the Jefferson County Regional Homeless Navigation Center. Under the second goal, infrastructure and street improvements, for those of you who have been in the TOD or may have participated in the opening of the food truck park, we completed a redevelopment of the sidewalks in, on Hooker in the TOD and added solar lighting to improve the pedestrian effect and make that a safe and welcoming climate for people to get in and out of their homes and in and out of the transit access. So as you see, we start off with the big goal, we start with the big project, the consolidated plan. We built from those goals, then projects and all of those work toward funding activities that will address all these identified needs. Next slide. This meeting with you and the opportunity to bring this to you is the launch of our annual activity or annual action plan planning. We now start a process that will run for over 30 days and we will review our proposed funding levels for this year's allocation with our regional partners, with community stakeholders, with our residents and hear from them how the investments are working and gather ideas. I would, I would note that the preservation of affordable housing is a program that I want to bring back and tell you more about is it actually comes from input we received from a lot of our local not-for-profit and housing partners. And so we're excited to get that implemented this year. The process for the annual plan requires that we do an extensive review process. And it also requires that you accept and approve both the annual action plan and accept the grant from HUD. Next slide.
Can I just ask a question with that? So if we have community and they have other ideas, but we already have a plan, we really don't consider those new ideas?
It, I would offer that we will consider the new ideas and we will take the input. And the example that I'm trying not to go too much into of supporting the preservation of affordable housing was ideas brought to us by a couple of our not-for-profit partners over two years. And so now we've built it into the budget to support the needs that they had brought in and identified for us.
And Molly, I'm sorry, and Mayor, if I could add on to what Molly said. A lot of the programs that we implement with federal dollars have a very long lead time and runway. So this is the 2022 plan that will be implemented in October. But things that we're doing now were things that we programmed with this body and the public and were approved in 2020.
I get all that, but I'm just saying if we're getting, I don't want to give community faults. Thank you. That they're coming with ideas and we already have a plan.
I understand.
Yeah.
Because really changes, we have to get approved by HUD, right?
Yes, sir. Right. And the plan, the final plan, the draft plan will go through this process for the next approximately 34, 35 days now and we will bring that input in and we will modify and adjust as needed. The plan does not get submitted into HUD until August 16.
And I understand that you said that some of our partners, and so I've been here over parts of this. And so there was a objective of the former councils that I do not believe is an objective of this council to be a national leader in affordable housing. And so I'm just curious how much that feeds into this portion of the plan. Not that I'm saying that we shouldn't, I mean, we have a lot of affordable housing that we want to make sure that we take care of, which I think I'm hearing you say. So is it more that part, less of the former goal and more just taking care of where we're at?
Yes, Mayor Protam. So are, in this budget that you see here in our current activities are around preservation of existing product that is also owned by nonprofits.
Okay. I thought that's what I heard you say. I just wanted clarification because of knowing that, that former goal.
Right. Right. Thank you.
But also along that line too, is that if I'm reading this correctly, we have allocated $468,000, but we have a budget of $585,000. So we do have some wiggle room for community input.
Let's, let's step through it. Yeah. So the top of the budget line is the administrative funds. The city receives up to 20% of the allocation for cost, administrative costs. It covers the salary of one full-time staff person as well as planning and other inputs to help us communicate and perform the work. The projects that we are proposing, and they're proposed at this time, is $160,000 into the Emergency and Affordable Home Repair. We have shifted on that across the years. It started out when I began working with the city that we provided our sub recipients $90,000 each. We were providing each of them $80,000 and we're doing so because of the pandemic. During the pandemic, they weren't able to get through all of the funding that had been allocated from 2018, 2019, 2020. So we're, we're still catching up a little bit on the work now that we can get into our clients' houses and begin to do the needed repairs. The next line item is 208025 to go into affordable housing preservation. And that is what we have synthesized a little bit here at the table. And that is we have a couple of affordable housing not-for-profits who operate very, very valuable affordable housing, long time use restriction on that. It will be affordable housing into the 2030s. And they need some, they need some upgrades. They need to put more investment in than they are able to actually fund through their own rents. So the goal for the preservation fund is to make that housing more attractive, more stable, more sound, healthy and whole for the people who live there as well as maintain the affordability, not add the cost of doing the upgrades and the lift on these properties a part of the rents. Councilor Nammella?
Yeah, just a question on that. When we provide those funds, is there any way to ask for an extended deed restriction?
Yes.
Okay. So like permanent or how long can we extend it?
So CDBG does not have a greater than five-year restriction on the use of funds in the preservation or creation of affordable housing. So the most we can really ask for by CDBG is five years. But as an organization, we can set a policy and talk that through. Most of the, the two projects who have come in the door and who asked us for the money during the CDBG annual action planning in the past two, three or four years really do have properties that are permanently affordable. They're not going to convert their use. And they are, they have both due restrictions and they're mission-driven not-for-profits.
That's good to know. I just, if there are others that are coming in, I don't know, but that would be something I'd like to see happen.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm just curious on potentially expanding. So I know the emergency essential home repair is a great program and it's definitely used. There were two other ideas that I had that maybe fit in that same thing. And I'm curious about the ability to expand that. Understanding the classification is a low-income resident. There's two different examples that have been brought up to me recently, one from the concidency board about potentially helping with some of the conservancy things that the city recommends to people that may be out of reach of low-income folks. Because that would be, I mean, there's a greater impact on those dollars because they're something that saves over time. So if you change your yard or whatever, so that's. So if you change your yard or whatever, so that's one example. The other one I thought of tonight when Counselor Azadi was, when we were talking about the, the theft stuff. So is there any potential to use these funds, um, for low-income folks for auto repair? Say if they're victim of getting their catalytic converter stolen or things, is there? And maybe that's not something you can answer tonight, but, uh, I mean, ultimately if the goal of those funds is to impact the low-income residents, I mean, that's, uh, something that again, there is a multiplier because it's allowing them to get to their jobs. Um, so I would, I would be curious in how we can, um, be creative with that. Because I know in, in some years, I don't believe, COVID aside, there have been other years where people haven't fully, we haven't used all those funds because of, you know, people not applying for things that, that were, were given out. So I would be interested in seeing, you know, how we could be creative with it.
Yeah, definitely. I think that's a great suggestion. We'll do some research.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Oh, Counselor Baker, sorry.
Well, I think Counselor Azadi has a question.
Uh, so a few questions. One, so I would second that idea too, I think that's a good idea. Um, what are the two nonprofits that you mentioned?
The two nonprofits who are currently, um, been working with me on their capital needs assessment and looking at their properties long-term are Brothers Redevelopment Inc. They own East Bay Housing, so it's all senior housing, it's all Housing Choice voucher. And the second is Growing Home for Westchester.
I was hoping you said Grow, because I know that that building-
They were, they were the first in the door, yeah.
Um, and then the third question is related to, so that's support for regional housing. How many communities are chipping in? So where, if we chip in, i- is this, uh, multi-city chip in?
I believe it is. I'm seeing interim counselor, Andrew, or you're not the counselor. You're supposed to be the interim city manager.
You just, no, you got a demotion.
Yeah, this point is ahead. Jefferson County, uh, all the Jefferson County, uh, are, are starting to discuss a, an LOI and then including, um, for all of them to participate. Including Jefferson County. There, it would be a pro-rata, uh, share based on some measure. Um, we, in the past, we've prorated by the basis of population. There's some discussion about prorata based on population served. So try and gauge, uh, the homeless population, which is different than our permanent resident population.
That would be for two sites in the county.
Ultimately, two sites that initially the discussions are for the first site. Um, and that would be the nature of, in the agreements, um, sought. Um, and then with a, with a, um, expression of, of intent to proceed with the second site. There, there's been a significant, uh, cost escalation for the facility, um, since it was first conceived, and that's, uh, being addressed now by the negotiators. That's in across the board. We're, we're feeling that in all of our contracts as well, capital and maintenance.
Mr. Baker?
So getting to Counselor Seymour's question, we do have a little wiggle room. Even though we got the five-year plan approved on a yearly basis, we can jiggle the amounts in each of these funds.
We certainly can.
Okay, uh, and, uh, we don't do any of those, do we, as a city? Because we turn over the emergency and essential repair to Jeff County and, uh, Brothers Redevelopment, right?
Correct.
And Jeff County takes 10% of what we give them, right?
Uh, for the administrative-
Or 20%, or whatever the cutoff is, right?
I think it's 15. I'd have to check that, let me check that for you.
And then the support we give to the, to the, what I call trespassers and other call homeless, they're going to take a 15% administration on that, aren't they?
Actually, at this time, we are working with the developer on the cost of creating the campus. Um, so this is not actually administrative funding, this will be capital.
And how about the affordable housing? Is that actually going to buy improvements for these two nonprofits? And if we feed them extra money, how are they sustainable in the long run?
That's part of the capital needs assessment happening with each of these programs. And I'm happy to bring that back to you all in a little bit more detail as we get ready to roll this out. I think it'd be great to share with all of you the, the structure of the program and how the funding will be applied.
See, because I would have thought that with this as their mission, that they would have put sustainability into the rents they can charge and the vouchers they exhume.
I-
Because otherwise, you're not, I mean, everything wears out.
Yeah, yeah. And I think it's the unique challenge of a lot of years. Both of the properties that are being considered are older properties. And so they are in need of a little lift. And, um, they can't charge enough in rents. They do a lot of grant writing and they have funds, as you know, Brothers Redevelopment has funds from other programs. But for them to actually take care of these, these properties and make sure that they are stable and they're in for the long-term service, they need to put a little extra money into the buildings. Um, so we've talked through, we've talked through the slide a little bit more with regard to, um, how it is, um, apportioned currently. And again, it is a draft plan. So if we learn more as we go through the coming 30 days, and yes, there's will room. We can certainly come back to you with, um, and some adjustments to this and the explanation for why. Next slide, please.
I just want community to hear, their voice will be heard instead of, here's the plan and we can only talk about this.
So we, we kick off this week, um, with all of you and providing this conversation with our elected officials who will see it now and also have it returned to you, uh, in July. So today, we're in the council session. We advertised all of this so that our residents could participate and pay attention to this. On Wednesday, in the same room, we're going to have a community meeting. And, um, I'm inviting all of you and for you to also spread the word to others, um, to have people come in and ask us questions just like this. To spend some time talking through a little bit about the previous investments and what we're proposing now. Um, and hear from others what they're seeing. Um, I know that some representatives from both of our sub recipients for the Emergency and Essential Home Repair Program are planning to attend too, so they could be visited with as well. Um, we then go into doing a little bit more promotion and talking with other groups. Um, I, um, Mayor Protem Demod, I have talked to staff about perhaps coming to the inclusivity board in the coming month and also just spending a little time where their last time I was there. So we, it's, it's always a stop in this process. Um, next slide, please.
Can we go back to that? Um, I would like to, since we don't send out community, um, newspapers from the city anymore, I'd like at a minimal, and obviously this is up to my colleagues for more, but I'd like to have this hearing at least published in the Westminster window. I think it needs to have some kind of physical, um, aspect instead of just all online promotion, so.
We can do that.
Also, I'm sorry.
Um, just, it would be helpful if you do have a, a link to a website that we, that you can send to us for this Wednesday. And then the other thing I just ask with respect to this community outreach process is that a summary be provided. It's not, you know, just having comments thrown into the back of a, you know, a staff report isn't as helpful as having those summarized and really like, you know, specific things being called out.
Thank you, Councilor Numella. Councilor Azadi?
The community meeting, do you have an idea of who, who's going to be? Who are you calling community?
Um, the initial outreach that we have performed thus far was to email to all of the people who have signed up to be on an email list for this information. And then our communications team has put it out on social media, on Facebook and Twitter and Nextdoor.
So it's whoever shows up?
It's, yeah.
I would just recommend, um, if there's capacity and room, to take it out to the people. So rather than having them come here on a voluntary basis, maybe ask some major, some community groups or organizations if you can go to them and ask them where they are.
I do have the information in the hands of the not-for-profit partners who are also on our list. So, um, Maker and Jefferson, Jefferson County, now known as Foot Hills Regional Housing, will help us also promote the information in their newsletters to their residents and, um, um, clients. And then also Growing Home and Almost Home are our sub recipients and they're working with a broader population. And so they also help us get the word out. Mayor Protem.
Well, and I, I like your thought of trying to spread it, but, um, I think the problem you're going to have is try to go to HOA, you're not going to hit the target audience because most of the lower-income areas of the city don't have HOAs. So, um, I don't, I like the idea of, you know, definitely advertising it and having it, make sure that we're, uh, trying to give people as much notice with a, a good space. Um, the other thing that I'm, I'm curious about though, so like when we go through the normal budget process, um, people have the ability to submit, uh, budget items to council and so that we can consider those. Um, and I know that you've said there's wiggle room and in the public will have a say. I really would like to, as a, as a council in a city, for us to make sure that we actually are making room for the citizen-led initiatives. Because, I mean, ultimately, if, if you have folks coming from a area of town that needs these funds and they're saying, hey, here's what our community needs, like, I feel like we should be able to do the same thing that we do with the budget process and be able to make sure we hear them to Counselor Numella's point, that we see kind of a good summary of them. Um, I would appreciate that and I think it's a good call out. Um, because it's no different than what we do in the, in the budget process. Um, specifically because, I mean, then there's some investment and this is something that they've, they're telling us their community wants, I mean, so.
To that point though, could we, I mean, is it possible that we could take half of that 100,000 and put it towards a community initiative that, uh, that Mayor Protem was talking about? I mean, I guess what was the pinpoint that, that it should be 100,000? Did we commit to that previously? Can we, can we maybe share it and say 50,000, um, to this?
It's a good point. I mean, on, ongoing maybe, you come up with a policy too, understanding this is like a, a couple of years cycle that, you know, maybe we start being more forward-thinking about having some sort of, uh, portion that we're saying we want the community to drive it, a certain percent of it.
On that note, um, the, the streets and infrastructure portion, um, in the staff report, it said that you're still kind of playing catch-up on, on those. So we're not really allocating new funds from this year to it. Is there any flexibility with how those, are those all just committed specifically to projects? Or is there any flexibility in those?
So, Councilor Mayor, you're speaking to the funds specifically allocated in the previous years to the infrastructure and pedestrian safety. Um, there is some, there's nothing in that. Hooker Street is complete. Um, staff did not allocate new money this year because we have no projects in the pipeline for the use of those funds right now. Um, there is a process inside of, inside of this process where we can amend and change the budget and allocations anytime we see a need and we want to be nimbly and direct. Thank you. Counselor Baker?
Really, weren't we asked for slowdown school zone signs and weren't they in this part of the city?
Seven, it was for STEM school, yeah.
Is it in this location of the city?
There, it's, it's at 70, just, just to the north of 72nd and Lowell.
That's in this part of the city?
It is in this part of the city.
I would like to do that then, and if we have wiggle room on this. And I think that's more important than $100,000 in Navigator or even $200,000 in delayed maintenance for the thing, for the, uh, two nonprofits. I'd be more than happy to change that allocation.
But I, while I agree with Counselor Baker that, that, you know, that's a, that was a very reasonable and, and request for the safety of children, we have money available for that elsewhere.
Right.
Yep. I don't think we're lacking in money for traffic needs. Personal opinion.
I thought there was some match and that's what the holdup was. I thought there was some match that the schools had to kick in. And that's what the holdup was. So if we can get the match money for this, to make it move ahead.
I just think we need to keep the process open, hear what the community says, and then come back and massage things. Anything else?
I think that's my last slide. Do you want to check for me?
I see people taking notes to date. These slides are available on the agenda online, just in case you're wanting to look that.
Hi, Council, I really appreciate this conversation. I really appreciate, um, the added thinking around more notification. It is the area where, um, staff would like to lean into this more and really spend a lot of time in front of the community. One of the things that I hear quite frequently in HUD trainings, and I think this has become pretty resonant for those of us working in a city like Westminster, is that we want to use this money to work with our community, not do things to our community. And so the more, um, we can get people together and if anyone would like to invite me and my colleagues to come to any meetings, we're there.
I just didn't want to give the community a feeling like, oh, they already have a plan. It doesn't matter that we have ideas. So that, that's the big takeaway from tonight is come with your ideas on the 22nd and we will all look at them.
Yeah, so in follow-up, I will, um, check in on the Westminster window schedule and get on that pretty quickly. I know they have a pretty, um, long lead time as well.
I'm not sure you'll meet this week deadline. But, yeah, because they're all published Wednesday. So, um, but for the hearing at a minimum, I'd like it to be in the Westminster window.
And then also check in with any groups to go out and actually talk to them. I'm going to come back to the inclusivity board and I'm going to send you all links to the thing, so you have it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody okay? You need to go on? Next one, presentation of notification requirements.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll turn this item over to John McConnell, our interim, um, director of, of planning. And he will lead, um, lead the presentation tonight, joined also by, um, Dave Germain from our planning group.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, city councillors. Uh, thanks for allowing us this opportunity, opportunity to engage you tonight. Uh, this conversation started back on March 14th of 2022, just, just a few months ago. Staff presented the city council with a proposed amendment to the Westminster Municipal Code that was designed to further enhance our notification requirements uh, for public hearings related to land use matters. And so at the hearing, there were some questions and concerns from the community and the council members. And the city council voted to table that ordinance. And they instructed staff to evaluate the concerns raised at the public hearing. And so this study session is intended to provide you, um, with additional options to consider based on the questions and the concerns that were raised at that public hearing. So senior planner, David Germain, is here tonight representing the planning division. And he has a presentation to provide you. And we're both here to answer your questions and take your additional direction on this matter.
Thank you, John, and good evening, everyone. Uh, I am Dave Germain. Um, we can go ahead and move to the second slide, please. Um, and as John mentioned, uh, we did have that, uh, item table on the March 14th city council meeting. Uh, that proposed amendment, if it had been, uh, if it had been approved, would have placed the obligation of procuring, posting, maintaining and monitoring public hearing signs on our outlets. It would have established a new minimum, uh, sign, sign size of 20 square feet. It would have required that mailed public hearing notices would be sent to all addresses in addition to all property owners within the city, within the currently required 500-foot notice area. Uh, and it would have required that the city provide mailing addresses for all recipients not available through county records. So the distinction there is we, we have been asking for the mailing to only include property owners. But we recognize, for example, in an apartment building, you have a property owner that's one entity, but all those individual renters are not getting enough. So that's where that was going with that. Uh, due to concerns raised by two members of the public at that public hearing, as well as the city council's own concerns, the council elected to table the proposed code amendment and requested that we, uh, bring forth all of the suggestions and, and have another meeting with those assistants here, to hear their, uh, greater input, which we did. Um, and so what you're hearing tonight is, uh, the result of that work. Uh, next slide, please.
And the abs aren't doing good, six to twos. Be glad you're here.
Sorry for those who were taping the game for later. So currently, our city code requires three avenues for public notice. The first is a newspaper ad. The code requires that a notice of public hearings is scheduled before the planning commission, and that would be at least ten days before the hearing. Public hearings scheduled before city council are published in the official newspaper of the city at least four days before the public hearing. And the official newspaper of the city was established as the Westminster Window by Resolution nineteen, series of twenty thirteen, on June tenth, twenty thirteen, for those interested in that little bit. Currently, staff prepares the notice for that newspaper to include the date, time, and location of the meeting to be held, along with a brief synopsis of what is being proposed for consideration. The newspaper notice is furnished to the Westminster Window in a timely fashion to ensure that it is published by the newspaper within the timeframe specified by the ordinance. Next slide, please.
Can we go back to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we feel ten days is enough for a newspaper ad? And I say that because Westminster is weekly and it's published on Thursdays and that's seven days. So do we feel that that's the time? Because if you, if you are trying to meet to, to ten days, you'll have to meet on their deadline, right? So for publication, so would it be prudent to maybe say fourteen days instead of ten? To allow for a two-publication timeframe? If that's what you're, if that's what's intended, because otherwise, why would we say ten? Or why would we say ten and not have it be seven, if you get what I mean? Since the cycle is not, it's weekly instead of not daily?
Well, I think what we're saying is it has to be published ten days in advance. So we would make sure that we meet the deadline so that it's actually published in the paper ten days in advance of the meeting. And so.
Is it unreasonable to try and get two publications?
If the council would desire two publications, that's certainly on the table.
I'm just throwing it out there because if, I mean, what's, what's the intent for? If we have the window as our primary source of, I'm just trying to think through.
And why do we have the window as a primary source? Can we not do it? I know when I was here before, it still wasn't legal to just use our website as a legal notice, but who reads the window?
Our residents, many of them wish to have it in print.
Well, there's a lot that would like to have it more than that because they don't get it.
Well, I mean, that's just, we publish it electronically as well.
Yes, sir.
This is not, it's an and/or.
At a minimum, it has to be published in the window, correct?
That's right. So what we're going through right here are the three requirements actually called for in our code. And to your, to your point, Madam Mayor, we do absolutely put it online as well. So, yeah, there are other avenues as well.
I guess it's it, so I know we have a variety of weekly emails that people can get. Is there one for this that they can specifically say, I want to be notified of these kind of land use or anything that go through the planning commission? Is there a specific list people sign up for just for those?
Not within our department and I'm probably not the most knowledgeable in how the city, the city advertises and mails out just notices.
I think, I think that would be an easy, low-hanging fruit thing to do, to have an email list sign up that goes through these publications, because then people who are interested in these could decide that they want to sign up and then they would, barring spam blockers and stuff, they would have an opportunity to get those emails.
So I'd say keep it at ten.
Okay.
There's much conversation.
Could you clarify? Or is, there's a, that's a, it's at least ten days, so you can still get fourteen days in advance, but it's at least ten days, no less than ten days.
And some of them, to Councilor Edmond's point, will be published longer because of that cycle system. It's absolutely true.
And to Mayor Protim Demont's question, I know as a citizen that I've gone on the website and signed up for the different, and I've checked all the boxes of the things that I wanted to get noticed on, but it's been so long since I've done that. I'm not sure if we're still doing it the same way, but I know you can check city council meetings and other interested things, or I think there's a box where you can get everything, but I don't know if anybody else in the table has any, any other.
You need to add your guys' department to it. Get to the IT guru.
Quick question. So you mentioned that there are other things you do, so we do online, there's a website. What's the full list? How do we notice fully?
So the three things that we're going through here, which is your newspaper ad, a letter that is mailed out from the applicant that is prepared by staff in advance, and then a sign that is posted on the property. The other things that you'll see are the website presence. We have a couple of different places on our website that will potentially talk about public hearings. And then we also publish the, the materials down on our bulletin board in the lobby so that folks who happen to be walking through also have the opportunity to see it.
No social media?
I do not know, yes.
Can you start doing TikTok? Just kidding.
I'm gonna go with a hard stop on that one.
But I, I think social media might be a low-hanging, that's an easy-to-do thing, post on Facebook.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay.
So how much is, how much is the city trying to offload on, on making it the liability of, or not the liability, the burden of putting out this information? Because I think that's what we're trying to do, right? As far as putting out, putting this on the applicant and not Westminster as far as notice? Is that, or are we still sharing responsibility?
We're, we, we currently have the lion's share of the responsibility. What was being proposed is to put the one, one element of it onto the applicant, which was the physical sign on their property.
Okay.
And we'll still have a very strong hand in that as well. And we'll, we'll get into some of those details.
Because I'd rather have it be on the applicant.
Yeah.
To have that be there.
There are some, there are some practical limitations to putting all of it on the applicant because there's, there's some information that they have, would have almost impossible time to get without us.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Germain. I would just add, so the reason we're putting out public notice on land development applications is to ensure the procedural due process rights of all the stakeholders. Not only the developer, but those that are impacted by the development who are in the neighborhoods, for example. So we want everyone to have a notice that there's an application pending, that it's going to be heard before the planning commission on a specific date, so they can have a chance to either put in written comments or appear and speak at that meeting. Same for the city council meetings. So, so we have these minimum requirements of, you know, publication, the signage, and letters to those within the five hundred foot radius. Those are the hurdles that you have to cross in order to get in front of a public hearing. There may be other ways to do outreach. I just don't know that you want to make those the hurdles of the applicant, like social media outreach or city email distribution lists or city website calendaring. Those are all great, I think, ways to do public outreach, but I don't know that the applicant has any influence over those outreach mechanisms. And I also don't know that those outreach mechanisms would, would satisfy the legal requirements for, you know, putting people on notice.
I don't think anybody's saying that. It's over and above. It's reaching absolutely everybody that we can reach so people are informed.
Thanks.
And if I may, there is actually one additional outreach that completely escaped my mind to Councilor Rosati's question. And that is that we also require a neighborhood meeting. So anything that will come before a body, either planning commission or city council in a, in a public hearing setting, will also have a neighborhood meeting in advance of that, a formal meeting. And that is in itself triggered by a mailing, again, to that, that five hundred foot radius by the applicant saying, hey, we're gonna have a neighborhood meeting. And so then folks who are interested can, can come for that. And then down the road, they'll get an additional notice that, hey, now we're gonna do the planning commission. And then, you know, subsequently, hey, now we're gonna do city council. So there are, there are actually three, I don't want to say bites of the apple, but opportunities for, for that person who is interested in the given piece of land or, you know, what their neighboring property is doing or what have you to, you know, hey, you know, really, I ought to get involved in that because I keep seeing it and now I have, now I've heard it. So there, there is that additional opportunity. If we're, if we're good, I'll go ahead and go to slide four, please. All right, so this is the next requirement in our code. Again, before the planning commission, a sign must be posted before ten, for ten days before the meeting and before city council, four days before the hearing. The posting shall be accomplished using at least one sign with a minimum of thirty square inches, lettering not less than one and one and quarter inches in height, at an appropriate location on the site that is reasonably visible to vehicular and pedestrian traffic passing adjacent to the site. Currently, the way we satisfy this is we work with an outside vendor to create public hearing notice signs. The signs are manufactured on an as-needed basis and posted on the properties that are under consideration. It should be noted that while public hearings are usually only needed for larger projects, individual homeowners and other, let's call them less sophisticated users may sometimes need a sign as well. For example, if they're looking for a variance on the property. Next slide, please.
Do, just one question. When we say, when we're saying thirty square inches, are you talking about thirty by thirty?
It's a very good question. It's actually a typo in our current code, as it's currently written. Thirty square inches is smaller than the sheet of paper.
Yeah.
We think it's a typo. It doesn't make a lot of sense otherwise.
Was thirty inches square, which would be a thirty by thirty sign.
We corrected that typo.
I was gonna say, I thought we did correct that.
That correction's been made, so it's actually thirty inches square.
Okay, then we're, we're ahead of our gallon.
Quick question. Yes, sir. Sorry, to go back to the last one?
Yes. Previous slide, please.
We had a resident, I think it was Mr. Palmer, actually, that in the last hearing on this, the inches, so the one before this. How is the vendor, see, say that we use a vendor to do the measurements?
Yes, sir.
Do they send out like a report, so once they, you know, they put it out there? Is that something that the vendor sends to certify? Hey, this is what, this meets code, et cetera? And where are we, how are we distributing that information to the public?
So the way the sign, do you want to, do you want to go ahead?
Oh, are we just gonna say that, yes, we, we send a mock-up to the vendor with all the correct information on it, the dimensions and everything? They send us a proof with all the measurements on it, so the staff confirms that it meets the code. Since the, since the issue arose or the questions about the size of the letters that Mr. Palmer brought up originally, we've required that the vendor do two-inch letters on the, on the signs. Just to make sure we're well above the one and a quarter and it's a lot more legible, too.
But that, so once that's done, though, there's some sort of validation report, I assume, of this has been done to, to your requirements?
Well, yeah, we physically, the city takes possession of those signs and we, we've been putting them in the field. So our, our teams install them and we have photographed, they take a picture of each one as it's being put in.
And we confirm that they meet the size regulations.
Yeah, to make sure that everything is done as, as we requested. Yes, sir.
I'm just curious if there's a way to avoid future, you know, if residents are going to measure and say, well, this is not right. What's our way of saying, here, no, it's certified, we, we've checked it. Here's this document or this something that shows that it's been checked and validated and it's all good. Is there a way to make sure that we can avoid miscommunication or misalignment of sizes, you know?
It's a, it's a good idea. I think that we could probably add something like that to our certification process that we already have. We require the applicant to, and the staff does this too. We require the applicant to make sure that the signs are posted on time and that they remain up. We go, we have them go out and check them daily and give us a document that swears that they were out there every day. We could probably easily add the, the confirmation on the, on the size and the letters and everything to that as well. I mean, we, we are pretty confident then when we get that proof back from the sign company and before we sign the contract for them to make the sign that everything's dimensionally correct. But to your point, once it's out in the field, that would be a good idea to check it, measure it.
Even if it's just posting what, you know, the, the document that the vendor has to use anyway, right? He has to tell you that he's, that he went out there. Even if it's just posting that and saying, okay, this is the work that was done and it has that one requirement of the measurements have been checked. It might just be a way of.
Maybe making the proof part of the record.
Yes.
Yeah, we could do that. Uh, Councilor Baker, did you?
Yes, uh, who, who really pays for the signs?
The only time that, they've only been used for a handful of meetings to this point and the city has paid for them.
Okay, and what do they cost?
They're two hundred and eighty-nine dollars apiece.
And, oh. And this is covered by the building permit fee they, or the plans check fee that they do? Because we charge a plans check fee before we go ahead with this, right?
We do, but there's, the sign's not specifically covered under that.
So for example, for Uplands, we had twenty-five of those signs. So there was no way that our fees that were in place at that time would have covered that.
Yeah, almost three hundred dollars a sign.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Look at my sign shop doesn't make them.
It costs that much for the metal and the protection.
Well, I believe that, but I'm just curious why our sign shop doesn't make them. They, they did it one time, I don't know. Andrews wants to comment a little more detail on that. The Uplands tested our system in a lot of ways. I don't think our, our sign shop was really kind of set up to do that level of production for development application. And so we, it kind of exposed a lot of chinks in the armor on, on, on their capabilities and it really stressed their system a lot. And so as a result, that's when we started hiring the outside sign company to build these things rather than our sign shop.
Okay, thank you.
And that, and that feeds the discussion. Councilor Baker had asked the question about the cost. So now if a third-party resource is making the signs and not our sign shop, the question is, you know, why would the city pay for that versus the applicant make the arrangement according to city specs to put their own signs out on their own property to notify of their own proposal moving forward? So that's kind of where we're at tonight in some of all, of all the input. And going back to what Mr. McConnell said, our, our sign shop is very, very busy with street signs and regulatory signs which are needing continual replacement and upgrading. And, for example, the Uplands project really came in at a time that taxed them. And so we got into, you know, quality control, volume, timing, all those things for a city shop that wasn't really designed for that sort of production.
Yes, sir.
And we put about twenty of these out a year, twenty of these projects? How many do we do a year, roughly, roughly?
Number of projects?
Yeah.
The number of hearings where we have to put out a sign. And I know we don't do an Uplands, so here, but I mean, these are for all the other projects we do in the city.
So, so these are for anything, any land use matter that comes to the planning commissioner, city council. That could be a PDP or an ODP, rezoning, a comp plan amendment. And I'll, I'll take a stab and generalize here, it's really only a handful that you see every year.
About twenty.
No, I don't, I don't think it's nearly that many. I think it's more.
Basically, only Uplands and twenty-five signs, two years worth of.
The one project had about twenty-five signs, but the number of projects that you would see in a year, at least in the last few years from what I've seen has only been four, three, four projects.
So really, even at three hundred dollars a sign, it's not killing us.
Other than the Uplands where that was, yeah.
That was seven thousand.
I think the Flat Irons Academy, for example, you might remember that public hearing, that was how many signs? Four signs. So that was, that was a fairly large property. So that was a fairly large property. Berkeley, you probably don't remember.
That was Jacobs, and I do not know how many signs we used.
That was probably four hundred is what I recall.
So it really is very nice for developers right now, say that, even though they have to do the mailing and the mailing costs, but we provide a mailing list for, other than the property owners, because the property owners, they can get from the county records. So they have to get those, but for all the residents, we have some database we can pull from.
We have our address database.
Okay. Really, those are two very proactive things that help developers.
Okay, the third item is the mailing. And again, this is a requirement for the applicants to handle. As currently written, they would mail the notice letter to all of property owners within a 500-foot radius. As you can see on the slide, it's still 300 feet for variances. And then that also would include any HOAs of record in that area. And the radius was increased from 300 to 500 feet with the passage of Councilor's Bill Number One on January 25th of this year. So that's a relatively new change. Currently, the way this is handled, staff prepares the letter to include date, time, location of the meeting, along with a brief synopsis as to what are being proposed. The applicant is responsible for preparing a map along with the corresponding mailing list, using resources that are readily available on both the Adams and Jefferson County websites. The map and mailing list must capture the owners of all properties within the 500-foot notification boundaries of the site being developed, and they're responsible for mailing a copy of the letter to the HOAs as well. So that's where that... Yes, ma'am?
It said in the staff report that the community development director can choose to go further. It would be probably helpful to have just what, based on what criteria? Scale of project, you know, just some basics, predictability.
Sure, consistency, yeah. Okay.
I think that's the same thing.
So...
If there's no homes around them but businesses, then what a subdivision within sight, shouldn't they be?
Well, I mean, on the note of consistency, if you decided to do it for some reason and inadvertently didn't do it for another one, I mean, that can be looked, put that as a bias.
Okay, next slide, please. So now we move into some suggestions that we would like to throw out to the council to consider. So starting with the newspaper ad, we were making a suggestion that the four days that we would allow for city council newspaper ads would be increased to the 10 to match what we do for planning commission. This would just make it easier for everyone to kind of know, it's always the same if we were to do that. So that's the first suggestion. Helps to avoid confusion, better matches of peer communities, which require the same notification time for both bodies. And then secondly, go ahead and include a copy of the newspaper ad and the publishing confirmation as attachments in your packets. Again, that's going back to that idea of checks and making sure everything was done Next slide, please. So this slide is the monster slide in the group, and that's why it's so many great graphics to look at. So our suggestion for the sign is to continue using the sign that I made a little bit bigger in the picture with the green check mark, which is the 48 by 60 sign, that was introduced in December of 2021. So that has been seen by a handful of land use cases at this point, and of course, most notably the Uplands. In this slide, you can see the signs that have been used for public notices by our city. And also, this appears as attachment four in your document. It's a very large pull-out page. You can see all kinds of details about each of these signs. But the first two signs, in summary, contained a large amount of information but were not very durable and they were hard to read. They also did not meet the minimum one and a quarter inch character size requirement found in the code. The third sign that you see in the series there met the size requirement, but was still hard to see. And all three of these signs required a great deal of staff time, invoking planning and streets divisions, printing resources, mounting materials, and none of them held up very well against poor weather. These signs would constantly be being ruined by moisture, blown down, things of that nature. The fourth sign introduces a sustainability component by being a durable, generic, reusable sign. The sign was designed and planning and produced by the streets division out of the same reflective materials as our common street signs are made of. The sign was relatively inexpensive to manufacture, they're about $15 apiece. They're easy to store, post, see, and recover. As a reusable sign, they were highly sustainable, but they did not contain specific meeting information and the lettering was slightly undersized. The final sign on the slide is the current one, and it features the name, date, and time of the meeting, along with two-inch lettering to ensure that we're not undersized. While the sign is more informative, it may be only used one time and suffers from being cumbersome to handle due to its size, and it's also hard to secure against high winds. You can see in that final picture there that our streets division, when they put that sign out, they used road barrier signs and affixed the sign to the stanchion. And that was the same day for the Flatirons project that we had the fires that, of course, caused all the great damage to our neighboring communities up north. Those signs were quickly blown over and actually torn off the stanchions. It was very hard to have a sign. It acts like a sail at that size, right? Okay, so the second suggestion, and it was according to signs, is the how often we would repeat them. And we came up with one every 660 feet or portion thereof. Again, this was based on input from the public, and it's also based on the Denver street grid. It's equivalent to one-eighth of a mile. And as an example, along the 2,600-foot Boulevard frontage of parcel A, that would have equated to five signs along that frontage. So the people moving along that frontage, if they happened to miss a couple of them, they would have other opportunities to see it. In total, parcel A, under this standard, would have had 16 total signs placed in parcel A.
660 feet is a block on the grid.
Yeah, that's a Denver, that's very common throughout the Denver metro area and all of the neighboring communities. Okay, next slide, please. For the applicant mailing, we have a handful of suggestions. Number one, include a copy of the letter to be mailed, the mailing list and the mailing map as attachments in your agenda memos. Again, this would help verify who received the letter and who did not. Number two, have the city provide the mailing list and mailing map to the applicant rather than having the applicant generate his or her own mailing list and map. They would still have the burden of making copies of the letter, mailing it to all parties on the mailing list. If you're wondering why, we can produce these maps very quickly and have that information produced, but what they cannot get, the applicants from the public, is all the individual addresses. So for example, the example I used earlier about the apartment building, all those individual addresses won't come from the counties. So it might just be easier to have our team go ahead and just produce the complete list and just have it all in one place. The third idea, modify the current 500-foot mailing requirement to include all addresses within the mailing area, such that the tenants and renters are also contacted rather than just the property owners. And this was included with the proposed code amendment that we tabled on March 14th and had also been a private city council or city council request, pardon me. And you can see, what you're seeing in the diagram there, to look at the little legend, it's showing you the 300-foot, the 500-foot, and the 1,000, how that would, how that appears on the real property, how many more locations are captured. Go ahead.
Well, I was going to add to, the mayor mentioned something very important earlier was when the radius just touches a neighborhood, you know, then how do we handle those situations? So some options there. Certainly now, we would just send a letter to the HOA, but...
We don't have HOA.
Exactly. So we could extend to everybody in that filing, in that subdivision, just require the property owner, I mean, the applicant to expand that notification boundary. So in other words, if that red ring touched the tip of filing number one of subdivision X and there were 50 homes in that filing, we could have that applicant expand that tall 50 homes in that file. So if that's something that the council would be interested in, that's definitely something.
I think that makes great sense, because sometimes you catch the corner of it, and then, okay, this is a community of interest, and then we can hit, I think that's a great way to manage that. I agree.
I agree, and I think, you know, it might be kind of hit or miss just sending it to an HOA, if there is one.
Right.
Right, and there's no requirement, if there is an active HOA, there's no requirement that that HOA shares it with their member residence either, which is, you know, we've seen that as well. Excellent. And so that was the final point, Johnson, thank you. And then the next slide, please. These changes do foster an equitable opportunity to help our residents feel at home and connected to the community and empowered to live their best lives, which helps support this city's strategic priority goal. And that is all for my presentation this evening. I am happy to field any additional questions you may have.
Any questions, comments?
That was excellent. Thank you so much.
Looks like you did a good job.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So the next step would be for us to revise the code amendment that was tabled. So we'll incorporate all of these changes and ideas, and we've captured everything, I think, that you all suggested here. And so we'll bring you a revised code amendment, and I'll let us know if we got it right.
Perfect. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You, too. You can lay to bed for now.
Short break.
Keep going.
Short break.
Let's go.
Look.
Everybody's been chatting tonight.
Don't take it out on us.
Thank you, Mayor. I will turn it over right away to Sarah Borger, our interim director of public works and utilities, joined by Stephanie Leicher, also from that department.
I'm going to say exactly what Jody just said, the woman of the hour here. Stephanie Leicher is here again for our monthly update with the council about the timber projects. We're going to be going into a little bit more detail about the different alternatives today, looking a little bit at the handy-dandy charts here that you've seen before. today, looking a little bit at the handy-dandy charts here that you've seen before. And I also want to introduce Carl London, who is back here in the green shirt. He is one of our lead engineers, so if you have any super technical questions, we can call our friends. So with that, I'll turn it over to Stephanie.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. We've come to you with two presentations in April, one in May, and today we're giving you another update on Semper rehabilitation and rebuild evaluation. We're going to be talking about condition assessment update. You've heard about this before. This is an update. I just want you to know in the background, the engineer is working on the design, so that's ongoing. You'll know more about that in the future. We'll talk about water treatment alternatives. You've heard about that before, but we're going to make it a little more concrete this time, paint the picture a little more clearly. And criteria discussion, we have the handout for that. You asked for some revisions to it, and you'll see those. We're also looking for additional inputs that you might have. And then we're going to talk about Semper as it is with respect to the criteria. And then we'll talk about next steps. Next slide, please. Right. So Semper condition assessment shows needs needed repairs. This isn't a big surprise. We've talked about the electrical and the concrete structures. You've seen the pictures, you know the age. These are the things that stand out as really the most significant and timely ones to take care of right now. Next slide. In fact, you've even seen some of these pictures, the cabinet that clearly needs replacement, not a big deal. Motor control center, this is the part of your electrical system that really provides electrical power to the whole plant and controls it. It's about as old as the treatment plant, so it is time to replace that. It's doable. And then the concrete. We've also learned that electrical conduit and cabling is in need of replacement. Next slide, please. Now, we're going to get into the alternatives, and I'm starting with a slide here that's titled Water Treatment Process Components. Is this what Semper looks like? No. Is this what Semper ought to look like? Not necessarily. We're providing this to give you some context as we move through the alternatives and to just kind of get those major components. This isn't everything about a water treatment facility, but these are the major components. So going from left to right, you can kind of see that depiction of the raw water into the rapid mix, into the mechanical flocculation. These are the pieces of equipment that physically remove contaminants, settle out in those processes into the sedimentation. And then we have solids handling to manage the solids, ozonation, that's an option, and deep bed filtration. Semper has shallow bed filtration. There are other options with filtration, too. So this is just to give you some context, left to right of the process. And as we look at the alternatives, you're going to see some of these will be present, but not all of them necessarily in the different alternatives. Next slide, please. Alternative 1A. This is kind of what Semper looks like. Right now, we don't have mechanical flocculation. We don't have solids handling. Ozination, not present. And we do have shallow bed filtration. So in this alternative, we would be bringing Semper up to current, this would be replacing the electrical, doing concrete repairs, doing those kinds of improvements to extend Semper's life as it is. There would be other opportunities for repairs that would probably make sense in 1B and 2. Let's take a look at that. And here you can see mechanical flocculation and solids handling are added. And the reason they're added is because we see those being likely regulatory-driven improvements in the near future. 2 is also listed there, and 2 is adding resilience. So let's talk about what resilience means. Well, I know the word bifurcation has been heard a few times. It's the ability to treat at the same time we're working on a portion of the plant. But there are other important things to be able to do. Right now, as Semper operates, as raw water comes into the plant and goes through those processes you can see in 1A, if for whatever reason the water isn't sufficiently treated as it leaves the filters, there's no way to re-filter the water. It goes to the clear well, to the high-service pump station, to the distribution system. And so it forces our operation staff to just be very quick in shutting Semper down. These days, plants would be designed so that they could re-filter the water. Oh, the water that's coming out of the filter doesn't meet standards? Let's send it through again. Problem solved. And so that would be another measure of resilience that would be one we would expect potentially to be regulatory-driven. Okay. Now we're taking it to a new level, so this is adding on. You can see the mechanical flocculation. This is enhancing the previous. We had that in 1B and 2. And deep bed filtration. So deep bed filtration really speaks to the ability to treat water that's more challenging, flood conditions, fire conditions. Sometimes they're just events where there are more organics present in the raw water, and that's where the deep bed filtration is particularly beneficial. We wanted to also consider alternative methods of filtration. We have a membrane plant at Northwest Water Treatment Facility, so we could install membrane filters as well. It's just looking at more than one possibility in this case.
Do any of these, like the deep bed filtration or the membrane, do they reduce the amount of chemicals that we have to put into the water to clean it at all?
The mechanical flocculation in particular does that. That's, as we said, we expect that to be regulatory-driven directive from CDPHG. I've heard they may be inquiring about our flocculation process. That's sometimes a precursor to a regulatory directive. And right now, our staff uses more chemical than they otherwise would if we had mechanical flocculation. Now, we just sort of have a wider spot in the pipe for that to occur, but we don't have those enhanced mechanical measures to cause the flocculation to clean out the water. So that would be one.
Question on when we're evaluating these alternatives, will we have things like that, like benefits? Or, like, I could imagine less chemicals is probably better, but also there's probably a savings, financial savings?
So we're going to address cost at the end, at the very end. So costs will include those kind of measures. And as far as the criteria are concerned, what I'd like to do is kind of take a look at the criteria, not in a highly technical way, but sort of a high-level way with the way Semper is right now and the criteria we have. And then I'll speak to where we're headed a little bit later in the presentation with that. Yes?
Physically, how much room does, okay, the mechanical flocculation need? Does it need a 10 by 10 by 10 space?
That's a great question. Mechanical flocculation, the engineer is evaluating it in our SED basins, like if you wanted to just rehab Semper, just rehab, not rebuild. It appears in their preliminary design effort that they can use part of the existing SED basins to accomplish that. So we don't need to increase the footprint of Semper for that addition.
And when we're doing solids handling, does that take care of the grandfather clause right now where we're just dumping people down the Little Dry Creek Sewer, metro west water?
Dumping what?
Because don't we dump solids now?
Solids, okay.
Down the sanitary sewer?
I heard.
I was like, whoa. We have a lot to do. We got a lot to change.
Small.
Because there are solids we remove. And right now, don't we have a grandfather clause?
It's regulatorily vulnerable.
Okay.
And so, you know, to get hit with a surprise, change it, you know, soon, as opposed to having a different plan.
And so that solves that problem.
That's correct. The other thing I want to point out as you're looking at this slide is that there are things that can be done on a timeline. There are things that maybe, you know, go ahead and do the mechanical flocculation now. I'm just going to say that hypothetically. Maybe that makes sense. Maybe it makes sense to consider ozone in the future and make a space for it. Improve the plant in a way that you could add ozone at a future date. Indeed, you could even do that with solids handling potentially to some extent.
Okay. And the deep beds, that means physically adding space because you're going from two feet of filter media to three feet or whatever it is, right? But we were told that there wasn't enough depth on those beds to do that there. Would you just add more concrete and make them deeper, or?
That's being evaluated right now, and I don't know that that solution is necessarily one that the engineer would pursue as far as how we would do deep bed filtration, where it would be if we were rehabbing. We could also rebuild. I mean, we're not just talking about rehabbing here.
And physically to accomplish, well, the bifurcation, because we want to have two independent streams of processing at Semper in really bifurcation, right?
Right. We want to eliminate, another way to put it is, we want to eliminate the single points of failure. And sometimes that's a...
Well, I thought bifurcation was different than the, well, the return. Because the single point of failure is if we don't make quality water at the end of the processing, we have no way to recycle it. And that is going to be a pretty straightforward fix, isn't it?
I'm not going to volunteer in this moment.
Pumps and switches and things.
Right. A simple fix on retrofitting a 50-plus-year-old plant may not be the right way to think of it, and it's not necessarily overly complicated. I just...
Because there are a lot of pipes in the ground going in all different directions. I understand. But I mean, isn't really bifurcation different than that, though? Don't you want to have like two sort of subunits or water treatment trains that can be operated independently, and you can shut one down and work on it while the other one still runs?
Don't think of it as bifurcation versus eliminating single points of failure. We want to have both capabilities. We want a plant where you can have part of the plant running and part of the plant shut down. And then there are places where we have single points of failure that just happen to be the way it made sense to design a water treatment plant back in the day. And so we want to eliminate both those vulnerabilities.
Okay, thank you.
Are you going to, so I mean, because I would look at this separately to your point, because being able to put the water back in and treat it doesn't necessarily mean you might have to stop, whereas if you had two paths, maybe this path doesn't have the problem, and you can continue to treat water, move the water over that path and treat it versus stop the water and be able to figure out the problem and retreat it. So I think I'm following, watching head nod. When we did the tour, there was a banded pump. So that, we used to have that ability at Semper once upon a time, right, where they could pump water back in and clean it again? Do I remember that right?
We did?
Yeah.
Okay.
To a certain extent, you could pump the entire plant back. Now, the regulation, you have to do a pump filter. And that would never ever able to do that.
Okay, thank you.
And when you say a single filter, doesn't Semper have like 15?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-five.
My mistake.
Functioning.
Last one.
Twenty-five functioning.
That was a big mistake.
I mean, their operational staff, and this is, maybe this might, I wasn't on the tour, so I don't have that context, but our operational staff are so good, they figured out a way that they could circulate the water back through, not enough, not enough to meet demand. It's sort of, it's sort of like, I liken it to, you know, putting a donut on your car and going on a road trip. We're looking for things that are robust, that CDPHG would approve, and so for that cycling back through. And yes, those are independent things, bifurcating versus cycling back through versus other single points of failure.
Will those have some sort of, like, I mean, you're doing all these different levers and giving them priorities. Will you give those when we're looking at this? Will they have some sort of priority, like bifurcation versus multiple paths?
Aren't these all necessities? The mechanical flocculation, the bifurcation, and the recycle ability.
Well, I guess that's a question for staff, because to me, everything is a trade-off. Like, and this is the same in my job. Like, if I want high availability, I could do that within seconds, high availability and data. But the cost of it is, makes it, you know, something that most places aren't going to do unless you're working for Wall Street or something like that. And so I imagine that there's going to be some sort of trade-off, where we're saying, you know, the trade-off is potentially if we were in the hottest month of the year or the hottest two months, we might have to say, we're not going to allow you to water outside because we're going to deliver indoor water. So I'm assuming that we're going to get those as options and understand what the trade-off is to not be able to do those things.
I think what you're asking me, if I knew all the answers, I could answer that question. And we are going through this process with council. We don't have the answers. We're going through it. So they're doing the design, the cost estimate is not done yet, how it's laid out and what those opportunities are getting, are happening right now. So I kind of, I hear these different thoughts, and I...
Well, back to your point of that potentially you could add it later, so, because that's another way to approach it. So if you said the ultimate plan is to have no single points of failure in whatever the new plant looks like or redesigned one, and we also want the ability to pump the water back in because regulatory, or even if it wasn't regulatory, I imagine we would want that because that's good to be able to do. But that doesn't necessarily mean, like, if we have to do that portion because of regulatory, but we also want eliminating single points of failure, maybe that's part of the phased approach. So...
Right.
So there might be trade-offs.
There may be, it's a good point, and there may be ways that you take a single point of failure and say, well, putting in a parallel system is going to be more than make sense hypothetically, but there's a way to make that single point of failure less vulnerable. So those kinds of things will be explored. We're going to, we want to optimize.
Makes sense.
Okay. okay, I think we got 3A and 3B, so let's flip the page. Okay. So this slide has what we talked about in a table format with two more things, four and five. Well, and four is rebuild with, rebuild with an adjacent site. So it's really rebuilding the whole plant. This is where you eliminate all the vulnerabilities. Um, and the other one is rebuild with Westminster Boulevard site. And so on that table, you can see the ozonation is selected. You could choose not to select it. You could choose to design a plant on an adjacent site or at Westminster Boulevard and say, okay, we're not going to, we're not going to do the ozonation now, but we're going to do it in the future. And so let's design the plant so ozonation can be added. Cost savings and flexibility. To some extent, you can do that with solids handling, especially, um, especially on a larger site. So certainly on the Westminster Boulevard site, that would be possible. I wouldn't say it's not possible on an adjacent site, but maybe it would be a little more challenging. So I, I kind of wanted to point that out. And this, this just kind of summarizes um, the different alternatives with the two additional ones at the bottom.
So all of these options include fixing the concrete and the electrical?
Well, the, anything where you're rebuilding, um, for example, on the, with an adjacent site, you wouldn't necessarily use the existing Semper. You could actually rebuild a new client, plant on an adjacent site or rebuild at Westminster, then no. But maybe in the interim, there would be some immediate things that needed to be do, done to just protect Semper and make it as robust it could be, as it could be before a new plant replaces it. And then the other thing is, um, that's not on this is, and we talked, we've talked about this, is having that future flexibility to replace and treat water at the same time.
But the, the rebuilding, so you're saying the rebuilding would definitely include, obviously, we would have new concrete, new electrical with those two rebuild options, right?
With rebuilding, I think we're generally talking about doing something nearby, but not, not salvaging Semper for a long-term, this is our treatment plan and, plant into the future.
But those rehab options, my question is, does 1A through 3B include replacement of the electrical and the concrete? I assume yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, it's additive in that case, yes. Okay. Let's go to the next slide. And we're going to hand out, yep, let's hand out the criteria. Last time we had some changes made. I apologize, these are black and white, but on the third page, um, you can see some strikeout text. Um, on the risk operations and maintenance complexity, you can see some text struck out. And then right after that, additional words added. Um, so these were your revisions, um, noted. This is, this is an opportunity for more input. And I, I don't want to go into a lot of detail and like, we're going to go, do a highly, highly technical analysis on Semper, but let's talk about Semper a little bit. And just kind of high level, how it looks on this, um, score sheet. So we talked about the electrical. And, um, the things at the top are really robust. And the things at the bottom, it's time to do something about it. The electrical is one of those. It's down at the bottom. We've talked about the concrete. Yeah, the concrete's an issue. Yeah, it's water bearing. It's not maybe at the bottom. Maybe it's part way up. Maybe it's a kind of in that middle range of, yeah, we need to, we need to give that attention because it's water bearing. It is, um, cycling that water back through so we can re-filter it. That's important. That's, that's an important vulnerability to address. We have one pipe under the railroad tracks. Do we took, put two pipes in? Or maybe we check the condition of the single pipe and line it? Maybe that would be one of those trade-off points. I'm not suggesting it, but that would be, there are different ways to mitigate risk. Filters, let's talk about filters. So our shallow bed filters, there have been times when the water treatment, when I've talked to the superintendent, when they've had challenging water and they can't recycle it back through and they have to shut it down. Having a deep bed filter would, would be more robust. Better treatment capability, especially for organics. Um, when we have sediment go through higher sediment conditions, less of an issue. Fires will produce both high sediments and high organics. Um, there was an interest in security. Our cybersecurity is, is pretty robust. Um, we have, our SCADA system is firewalled. Um, our physical security, there's a fence around the plant. Not the best, but we have a new camera system that's intelligent, that can see if someone's moving and climb in the fence and notify staff. So, so we mitigated it, that, that vulnerability that way. Um, instrumentation in SCADA is fairly up to date. Um, we keep our filter media, we replace it more frequently. This would be another thing that, um, Councilor Nermella, I think you asked me about earlier. We replace filter media more regularly. Um, than maybe we otherwise would because we really depend on that filter to work. It is so shallow. Um, so that would be one of them. It's kind of a high-level review of it. Where Semper stands today.
So can I ask stuff? So maybe looking at the different filter options, what Rachel might see is for a shallow bed filter, you'll see a lower number on that. For a deep bed filter, you'll see something that's higher than that. And those numbers will get applied to your priorities of how important is it that we have a good quality filter? Is that an accurate way of putting it?
Right. It, it's going to be more robust water treatment. So will mechanical flocculation? The mechanical flocculation will aid the filters as they are.
On, on the deep bed filtration, when you say organics, just because it's been such a question and things like the newspaper, does that, um, address the, the fire risk? When you say organics, just so we're clear, I think that, that's what I heard, but.
Um, the fire risk generates both more sediment and more organics. And then there's the taste and odor issue. So it, it, it addresses the organics. Ozone really addresses that even more powerfully. Um, that's probably more significant, but I don't, I think if you did the ozone, you'd, you'd have deeper beds than what we have right now. So that wouldn't be a, a trade-off.
That makes sense.
Um, next slide. In, in, in July, you will see an agenda memo that addresses, um, potable water interconnects. I know there were some questions about that, so that's coming in July. It's an information-only agenda memo. Um, um, and then in August, we'll be coming back with condition assessment completion, water treatment facility, alternative site layout. So we're going to get a little more specific on what that looks like. And then the criteria based evaluation, we're going to take those alternatives. And our engineer, engineering team is going to rate those alternatives on this criteria sheet. And we're going to bring those criteria, scored criteria sheets to you for the different alternatives. That is council's opportunity to provide feedback, ask questions, challenge. Um, and then finally, we're excited to bring, um, we're going to start with a range of costs, not pinpoint costs, but a range of costs because that's really where they're going to be, what they're going to be ready for in August. We'll dial those in more, um, in the coming meeting, but it'll give you an idea of where those costs are going to break out for the different alternatives. Questions? Councilor Baker?
So we're not going to have the costs in August?
You're going to have a range on the costs, but they'll be, they'll be dialed in a little better at the following meeting.
When's the following meeting?
Shooting for September.
Will September be the final? So when, do we have an idea of when we'll actually be able to get the final and make a decision and move forward?
That decision is also linked to our next presentation. Um, so it is our intention to provide you the information with respect to Semper itself at the next, at, in the September meeting. And our executive session presentation is also related to it, so.
Yeah, I have to saffay. Um, I found these charts pretty unhelpful. Um, I also have to say, and I think I made myself extraordinarily clear that for me, cost was the primary criteria. And the speed of getting the cost was vitally important to me because I think that we, uh, that costs are going to play a pivotal role in decisions we might make about condemnations that we're looking at. And for me to see the costs keep slipping away, concrete, tangible, good estimate cost is just so frustrating. I, I don't know how to explain it any better. And, and I have to speak out and, uh, I don't know how my colleagues feel on this, but I'm, I'm super disappointed.
Just, I mean, I think we all wanted that. Um, understanding that some timelines have changed, has that given us the ability to take a closer look and drug that out? I, I mean, I, I'm asking the question, is that kind of where we're at? Because we got a little bit of breathing room through no decision of our own. Um, does that, has that played into it?
I think that's part of it. Um, we do have a little bit more breathing room. It does give us a little bit more opportunity to look at additional stuff. Um, it's really just been a function of, the team has been working long hours, um, working really hard to try and hit these deadlines. And it's just been a lot of work to get to this point. And so we're going to do our best. Uh, we will have some ranges in August, um, but it, there's just still some more detailed engineering work that needs to happen before we can really kind of narrow that down and make sure that we're giving good, solid numbers.
Well, and I hear and share somewhat your frustration, but at the same time, I want to get it right. Um, and I want to understand the options and the trade-offs that we might make because at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we're making the right choices for safety, but also to keep water affordable. And so I, I want to make sure they're vetted out. So I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Councilor Baker, but I also want to get it right. So I mean, I don't want to rush to, for me, I don't want to rush to the cost just to get a cost. But I, but I agree, like, there's got to be some priority on it, but like if, if they're saying they need that time.
Process in February.
And as you said, a process, right? There's more, as we, was just outlined on a presentation, there's so many variables as far as what we want, what we don't want, and the safety of it. And, I mean, going, meeting CD-PHE terms. And there's regulatory terms that we now, if we touch it, now we have to meet it, you know, and change it.
Right. And those are all baseline, aren't they? We're not going to make any alternative choices on those.
Those variables, and those variables come with costs.
I, I guess for, for me, and this is just me speaking, I've been having this argument, begged for this stuff for four years. So the amount of things that I've been given by staff, uh, it's so much information, it's actually a lot to keep up with at this point. So a couple of months to me is, is, is worth us doing the, the right due diligence, which is what, for me, what I've been asking for, for, for four years prior to this year. So I appreciate all the work that's being done on here. And, and I, I feel like we're on a good path. As much as I want to see the cost and wish I could see it tomorrow, like, I, I want to get it right.
Well, you know, to me, that's where trade-offs are made. Trade-offs have to have a dollar value because that's what you're trading.
But, but to, to that end, Councilor Baker, we're, we're not having this process discussion in lieu of getting the cost. The costs are being developed. You can't engineer something like this within three, four months either. It's not, it's not possible, you know? I, I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, we're, we're working through this process and in the background, things are going like 100 miles an hour. But, and then the costs change every day too, unfortunately, but.
That's true.
Yeah.
I, I want to manage your expectations a little bit and also share something. Engineering includes cost always. Engineers care about cost. CDM cares about costs. Sarah and I, we all care about cost. It's a deliverable that shows up at the tail end of design because you can't do the cost without having the design done. And, um, and the other thing is, to whatever extent we end up retrofitting Semper, it's kind of like retrofitting a really, maybe a really old house. Where once you tear something out, you're going to find something, but before you tear it out, you're not going to know. And, and that, it would be weird if that was not a factor with Semper's costs. So to tell you right now that you're going to get a pinpoint cost on any rehab, that might not be what actually happens, so I don't want to tell you that.
Well, for me, and I said this to, um, interim city manager Andrews to, when we always meet just before the meeting, I kept seeing all these rehab, rehab, rehab. And after going through the plant and, and seeing so much of what isn't working and we can't get stuff out of there and whatnot, um, I'm not sure I'm at the rehab piece. I think if we're going to put this kind of money into this, we need new, we need, we need a function, to know that this is going to function. The question for me is where it's going to go. And, um, and I want the best that we can afford. Um, but I'm not, I, I just don't want anyone to, I, I can't keep looking at all the rehab stuff when I'm not sure, because you're right. When you go to do a house, you have, you start taking things off and you discover this and you discover that, and you could never put that in a price. You just never could because you didn't know you were going to discover it. So, um, I'm looking more at the rebuild. The question for me just is where it's going to be, and I know. And I know we're going to discuss that in our next meeting. But I can't thank you enough for all that you keep bringing to us to make us think. But that was my aha in reading all of this pack at this time was, I don't think I'm looking at rehab. I think I'm looking at where can we build a good, working, functioning, as best as we can afford plant that we need for the future? It's just, how big does it need to be? Where does it need to be? And how do we get it done? Obie? I'm sorry, Counselor Obie?
Yeah, just to add to that, I want to second that. I'm much more concerned about the rebuild options, the alternatives. Where, how big than rehab? Because, you know, I've rehabbed houses in many past lives. And there's always something, you know. And this is too important to fix this, fix that. I would rather see a lot more options on the rebuild side. But I'm guessing that's the next one, I think you said, the alternative site layouts? That's next time? So, I'm really looking, really looking forward to that.
And just to level set, like, my expectation has never been, let's throw some concrete on a hole in the wall. Like, the question is, we have a site, all the pipes go to that site. How do we upgrade that site? So, when I'm thinking rehab, I'm thinking rebuild within the site. So, and if that's not the right site because it's too cost prohibitive, great, tell me what's less. But I just want to make sure that I level set on that. So, because I think the terminology of rehab versus rebuild, a lot gets lost in that. And I'm not by any means saying, let's, you know, throw new paint on the old motors or anything like that. I want something that's going to last us another 50 to 70 years.
Mayor, I could, maybe I could provide some roll-up or wrap-up comments to address some of the concerns and then, you know, rolls into next steps. Just a couple of things here. It's been touched on quite a bit in the discussion. Time and effort is going into two streams of work here. One of them is the rehabilitation options. We are, this design team, the staff and the consultants are delivering on the expectations to produce viable rehabilitation options for Semper plant. And they will be in that range of options that staff laid out tonight. Those are multiple design efforts. There's five of those undergoing, as you can see by the option count, five at the same time. And they're not only design options, they're rehabilitation options. So, they're getting into that renovation part of the work, which has a lot of variables in it. So, that's, Counselor Baker, where a lot of the time is going is to produce for you viable rehabilitation options. And those will range in cost. And as staff has said, the costs are be... Come along with the process and will deliver them to you at a time when there's a confidence interval that you can actually rely on to make a decision on those costs. It'll start with a wider interval, and it will narrow down very rapidly afterwards. The other part, the other stream is simpler work. That's, it's still a significant amount of work, but it's a new build plus land. So, those alternatives are not the same as renovation or rehabilitation alternatives. So, that's where the bulk of the effort is going in for the design team right now is the rehabilitation options. So, you have comparables. One of the things that we really heard is that you wanted to have comparables. You wanted to have apples to apples to compare when you look at that final matrix to make your decisions. The other thing I would note is, in terms of the process and the time commitment, this is a very high level of engagement that, listening to you, we've designed in for city council engagement, right? So, this, we've not proceeded with high touchpoints on this project, but this is deep engagement with you. And that does require some deeper work to make sure that we're connecting correctly with you. So, the feedback in earlier sessions and also in tonight, very helpful for the team because every time we come to you, we make, we get more clarity and we get, you know, we get a stronger sense of direction as to where we're going together. So, I just wanted to make those points and affirm for you that there is significant amount of effort going in on the staff side. There are no pauses in the work. They're very intensely engaged at the staff and the consulting team level to produce for you what you've asked for. And that you will get it. And again, in August, or an interval or range, and those will, that will narrow down very rapidly to apples to apples that you can compare. If that makes sense. And then, our next session will be the land component of this related to perhaps one of the rehabilitation options and certainly the rebuild options.
We thank you very, very much for everything and all of your hard work. And glad to see you live today. Hope you're all doing good.
The bugs finally have to the office.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Will be in the executive session?
We do, Mayor. If I may, the agenda contemplates an executive session at this time to discuss strategy and progress.
Is that the same one you've been chewing on for the last six hours?
Is it the up-and-a-cup?
It's one of those things. I've eaten worse than this out on my bike. It's a low bar. Okay, will it melt? That's key. Will it melt in my... I think it'll just be squished. I've eaten those things, too.
That's a lot of protein and carbs. Did it taste, did you, did it have like...
A lot of taste?
No. Okay.
I was like, oh my God, it's gone.
It's like, you want bad taste or no taste?
Yeah, it doesn't taste, right?
Peanut butter, how can they screw up peanut butter?
They did.
It's barely peanut butter. Even though it's the first thing... The ingredients, though.
Did you try it?
No, I didn't.
I feel like we all need to...
I'll take your judgment on it.
I highly suggest it.
Well, I probably eat more than you, so...
Yeah, that is a low bar.
If you've tried a variety of granola bars, protein bars...
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, okay. Please, I apologize.
I think we're back on. The next executive session on tonight's agenda is to discuss strategy and progress on the potential acquisition of property for rehabilitation of the Semper water treatment facility and to provide instruction to the city's negotiators as authorized by Westminster Municipal Code 1113C2 and 7, as well as Colorado revised statute 246402 for A and E1.
We have reason for executive session. I will call council. If you're willing to go into executive session, and we'll keep what is discussed confidential. Counselor Baker?
Yes, and I will.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Emmens?
Yes.
Mayor McNally, yes. Mayor Potem?
Yep.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Izadi?
Yes.
Dodi Andrews, yes.
Barbara Opie, yes.
Sarah Borgers, yes.
Stephanie Blucker, yes.
Larry Dory, yes.
Dave Frankel, yes.
And who up there needs to be here?
Mr. Palmer?
He's a no.
Why don't we, yes, before we adjourn the public portion of tonight's agenda, Mayor, if we could just take the vote on the other two executive sessions? That way, we can go from one executive session to the next to conclude the evening, so...
All the same people will be here?
Well, the team will change slightly. But the council vote is the portion for the open meeting. And the next executive session that's agendized for tonight is to discuss collective bargaining and to determine positions relative to matters subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and instructing negotiators pursuant to Colorado revised statute 246402 for E and Westminster Municipal Code 1113C7.
I will call council and ask that you keep, we'll keep everything confidential. Counselor Baker?
Yes, and I will.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Emmens?
Yes.
Mayor McNally, yes. Mayor Potem?
Yep.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Izadi?
Yes.
Dodi Andrews, yes.
Barbara Opie, yes.
And when your collective bargaining team comes in, they can affirm to that as well.
And then, our third one?
The third executive session for the evening is to consult with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice related to potential coordinated actions in response to State of Colorado House Bill 1024 pursuant to Colorado revised statute 246402 for B and Section 1113C3 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
And I will call council that you want to go into that executive session, and we'll hold whatever is discussed confidential. Counselor Baker?
Yes, and I will.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Emmens?
Yes.
Mayor McNally, yes. Mayor Potem?
Yep.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Izadi?
Yes.
Thank you.
And it is 1028. We're in the executive session.
So, now, I need to, we can close out the public session, please? Thank you. And then, I need to transfer us over real quick.